I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Mrs. DeCarlo, may I please have your roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Goodlauer.
Here.
Mrs. Mazick.
Here.
Mrs. Shields.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Thomasini.
Mrs. Cumbler.
Here.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and attend meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused notice of the of the township, the township library, and on the school website. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose stated in the public notice? Show of hands. Thank you.
No need to.
Can I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved, second.
Kristy, Mrs. Corla, at 7:30 PM. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Those at home, can you hear us? Okay, thank you. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public the opportunity to address issues regarding the operations of Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take the opportunity to identify themselves by name, address, to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments, and be aware they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Can I have a motion to open to the public for comments? So moved, second. Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Smith. Can I have a show of hands? Are there any members of the public waiting to speak? Let it be noted that there is no other members of the audience present to speak. Can I have a motion, please, to close?
So moved, second.
Show of hands, please. Thank you. Next on the agenda items, we have communications. Currently, we had have no correspondence received since the last meeting. I checked board mail this afternoon before I left. There was nothing further. Mrs. DeCarlo, is there anything else?
No, there was nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Next is to approve the minutes of the January sixth meeting. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Scora and Mrs. Shields. Any board member wish to discuss, have comments regarding the last? Mrs. DeCarlo, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. May I please have a roll call? Thank you.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Cordaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Teleport?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Rockaway Township. I hope everyone is doing well. I know we are all hearing daily news reports about the availability of vaccinations for COVID- nineteen. As a school community, we have not yet received a timeline for when educators will begin to receive the vaccination. As soon as we receive more information, we will move quickly to share these details with the community. Please note, we continue to operate the district with all of our safety protocols in place, and we will remain vigilant with implementing our safety protocols on a daily basis. With our return to hybrid instruction, I must continue to ask all families to please continue to partner with us to help keep all of our students and staff safe. By completing the daily screener, each warning, wearing face coverings, and practicing good social distancing, you will help us be able to continue to provide in-person instruction for our students. Most importantly, if your child is not feeling well, please keep them home from school and contact your school nurse for additional guidance. Based on the current conditions of the pandemic, one sick child in school could now be considered a presumed positive case, depending on their symptoms, which could cause many others to be deemed to close contact and thereby a need to quarantine, which in turn may limit our ability to continue operating our hybrid model. I can't overstate enough the importance of the partnership between our schools and families during this pandemic. On behalf of our entire administration, please know how grateful we are and remain for your ongoing partnership. Tonight's agenda also includes the policy manual update, which is up for a first read. The preparation of this update was the culmination of several months and many hours of hard work completed by our policy committee members. I would like to thank board member Cora Laru, board member Thomasini, board member Messick, and board member Smith for their attention to detail and tireless work on this very significant project. I very much appreciate their partnership. Lastly, in an effort to help everyone track the most current data related to the pandemic and our school community, we've launched a COVID- nineteen data dashboard. It is easily accessible from our website and includes a weekly snapshot of current positive cases in the district, as well as individuals who are associated with the school community in quarantine, and the percentage of students by grade and school currently enrolled in the full virtual learning model. It will be updated weekly. I hope the community finds it to be informative. In closing, from the recent events in D C to managing the conditions of this pandemic, may I say that it has never been more important for us all to take a moment to reflect on how truly we are better together. May our better angels continue to guide our entire community, together as one community, united, safely through this pandemic and chaotic time to safer and happier times on the horizon. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member have any questions or comment? Is it superintendent? Thank you, Dr. T. Next on the agenda would be the business administrator's report. Mr. DeCarlo?
Good evening, everyone. I just had a few short comments for this evening. The business office is in the process of developing the budget for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two, and planning for capital projects for next year. Our audit has been completed and will be discussed at the February board meeting. Our maintenance department was very busy during the time our students went full virtual. They have finished work on the COVID guidance suite, completed numerous painting jobs, replaced all H P A C filters, and inspected all boilers, electrical, and fire panels. Our custodial staff has deep cleaned old buildings and made sure sanitizing gel, disinfecting wipes, and gloves are fully stocked in low areas. I would like to thank the company for the service, the maintenance workers, and custodians for their hard work during these challenging moments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCarlo. Any board members have any questions or comments? Next on the agenda is the curriculum court from the assistant superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. Through many recent conversations with parents, administrators, and teachers, we recognize the importance of partnership now more than ever. So much of our learning and teaching, especially at the lower grades, is happening virtually in our living rooms, kitchens, and family rooms. Through Google Meet, our teachers are an ever-present member of your daily routines. It is our aim to augment that partnership through a series of resources to help support our parents and families as our partners in educating our children. We know that some of what we do in the classroom does not look anything like what our classrooms looked like when we were in school, and that can be daunting. We understand that math doesn't look the same way, that reading is much more skills-focused, and that so much of what we do, especially now, is through technology. We want to give our families an insight into our why. To do this, we have recreated and reshaped our Hybrid Family Resources page to include a bi-weekly blog. In addition to tutorials about tools and methods, health and wellness updates, and technology supports, we will provide you with the reasoning behind much of what we do and why we do it. We look forward to sharing this with you in the coming days. As you also may be aware, we use a variety of screening tools throughout the year to help us monitor the growth of our students and make adjustments to their learning goals, learning plans, and targets. These assessments are typically administered in September, January, and June. These assessments will begin on January thirteenth and run through the beginning of February. The information we gather from these assessments is vital to our teachers, especially given the virtual and hybrid modes of teaching. Knowing where student strengths and weaknesses lie within subject areas gives our teachers the ability to be efficient in their planning, which leads to bigger gains in student learning. In many cases, these assessments can be done while the students are virtual, especially the iReady diagnostic. Some students will take the iReady during their days in school, but others may take it at home. To assist those students taking the iReady diagnostic at home, please refer to the link sent home on January twelfth. We know the test can be difficult at times. However, the format requires that students work or complete the work independently. iReady uses the students' diagnostic results to create a customized path of learning for each student based on their strengths and weaknesses in math. The questions on the diagnostic are designed so that fifty percent of the material is content the students have covered, and fifty percent is content they have not covered but may be able to perform based on its relation to previous content. Similarly, any of our reading assessments given virtually must be done independently to ensure we are seeing an accurate reflection of the child's performance. In a year like this, our understanding of where students are academically is so vital to us so we can match the supports we provide. Should you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to your child's teacher first. This month's Family Night was for fourth-grade students and occurred on January twelfth and thirteenth. Facilitated by Mrs. Thomas and Mrs. Waxman, the focus of the night was for families led by children to create catapults and measure their launch distance. Families focused on principles of engineering, the design process, and mathematics as they assess their end products using ideas like launch angle and mass of the projectiles. Throughout the whole process, students, families, and facilitators all enjoyed themselves, and creativity was evident by all. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Any questions or comments from Mr. Higgins?
I'd just like to make a comment. I had the pleasure of attending with my daughter the recent virtual Family Night, and she had an amazing time, and we greatly appreciate those opportunities. So thank you.
As a math teacher, I saw that and it just made me smile. Like, that just looks like so much fun, and I just love
It was.
when kids are engaged with the math. It's just awesome. Love it. Good stuff. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Okay, next on the board agenda is committee reports. I just want to let everyone know that the committees have been formed, and they are in the process of being uploaded onto the website and updated. We have two pieces that I'd like to just mention. One is we are adding an ad hoc committee of the community outreach, and that's going to be led by Mrs. Brooks. And we have an ad hoc committee regarding the policy manual, just to finish the last couple of pieces that need to be done to button that up. And then our traditional operations, policy, education, and of course, our negotiations. Operations will be chaired by Mr. Thomasini. Policy will be head by Mrs. Cora Laru. Mrs. Smith will be taking the education chair, and Mrs. Shields will continue on as the chair for negotiations. We also have an updated description on the community outreach, and basically it is to aid the superintendent with building relations and making the district's goals and objectives known to all stakeholders, including schools, non-school, and local business communities. So these updates will be reflected on the website, and congratulations to those new chairs, and I appreciate the work of the previous chairs moving the board forward in its work. Anybody from, since it's new this year, I'm not sure how many people have any committee reports? Do you have one, Mrs. Smith?
It's not necessarily a report, but I was in touch with Mr. Higgins, and we have set up our first education committee meeting for Wednesday, February tenth, at four P M.
Okay, awesome.
What time was that?
Four o'clock. Anyone else?
Yeah, just negotiations will be meeting on Monday.
Thank you. All right. Okay, that is all for committee reports. Next on the agenda is recommendations for board action. The first piece is personnel. We have sixteen items. Can I please have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations for personnel?
So moved, second.
There are sixteen items that go to page four, and since this is personnel, there will be no discussion. Mrs. DeCarlo, when you're ready for a roll call.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next section is H I B. Dr. T, can I just confirm that we have no?
Yes, that's confirmed. There are no active cases.
Thank you very much. The next section of the agenda is education, and we have three items. Can I please have a motion to approve the education recommendations?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Any board discussion? Okay. And since there is no members of the public, I will move on to a roll call.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Shield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is special education. We have two items. Can I please have a motion to approve the special education recommendations?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion? And again, noted, no public members of the public. So may I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is administration. We only have one item. Can I please have a motion to approve the administration's recommendations?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Any board discussion regarding that one item? And again, there are no members of the public. Mrs. DeCarlo, when you're ready, please a roll call for administration?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is finance. We have eight items for finance. Carries through to page nine. Can I please have a motion to approve finance recommendations?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Any board discussion regarding finance?
Yeah, in regards to number five for bills, I went to the board office yesterday, and everything was ordered, and I signed off on them. So my recommendation is to approve.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shields. Any further board discussion? Okay. And again, no members of the public. Mrs. DeCarlo, may I please have a motion? I'm sorry, may I please have a roll call on finance items? On page ten.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shield?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have policy, and this is our policy manual update. May I have a motion to approve the policy recommendations?
So moved, second.
I was gonna say, but with board discussion. Is that appropriate?
But you can move it, but then you're gonna be amending it later. That's why I was suggesting if you took a motion to table it first.
Table it first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, in that order?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I, before we do what we need to do with policy, we have to make, we have So can I, before we do what we need to do with policy, we have to make, we have to join me?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to table policy three, four, three, seven, military leave under teaching staff and policy four, four, three, seven, military leave under support staff based on the legal update information we received during the executive session and pending further review. Thank you. So you made a motion to table? And I need a second. Thank you. So that would be Mrs. Smith and then Mrs. Mezick. And can I have a roll call on the tabling?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle Laro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, okay. This is the table. Okay. Now may I have a motion to approve the policy recommendations with the manual update? Mrs. Coyle, may I have a second?
Second.
Any board discussion?
Yes, so I would like to go through the individual policies and share changes regarding this. So this document was shared as a Google Doc with the full board on January first, along with an email of any policies to note that may have had some minor revisions. Upon revised guidance from Strauss S M A, the policy committee is recommending that the manual update go up for a first read prior to adoption. The manual was chunked into two parts and tonight we'll be taking a look at the policy and bylaw portion only. The committee examined forty policies to possibly include in the update and I'm going to summarize some of the changes. So I'm going off of the clean version of the document. The first policy is one, five, five, zero, equal employment, anti-discrimination practices. This was from alert, the alert date April two thousand eighteen. It has a revised regulation. The only revisions in the policy guide are a title change from affirmative action program for employment and contract practices and the addition of a statement regarding minority businesses, women's businesses, enterprises, and labor surplus area firms. If you take a look at the second policy, it's policy one, five, eight, one, domestic violence. This was from a recent Strauss S M A alert two nineteen. It has a revised regulation as well. These revised guides now incorporate all of the provisions of the uniform domestic violence policy required by statute and the requirements of the New Jersey Safe Act. We had noted that this policy varied greatly from the online version, so that's why the Google compare version was included as well with the strike throughs. Policy number three is policy two, two, seven, zero, religion in the schools. This is from Strauss S M A alert two twenty. The United States Department of Education updated its guidance on constitutionally protected prayer and religious expression in public elementary and secondary schools on January sixteenth, twenty twenty. So this policy reflects those updates. The fourth policy, two, four, two, two, health and physical education is from a recent Strauss S M A alert two nineteen. There were three new statutes that were recently approved. Two of them were included, adding curricular items. One was pertaining to financial literacy instruction. Another was the history of disabled and LGBT persons included in the middle and high school curriculum and policies procedures pertaining to inclusive instructional material. The next policy, number five, is policy two, four, three, one, athletic competition. This is a policy that wasn't originally included in the manual update, but the policy committee saw a need to add it because it was in a much more recent alert, two twenty one, and it related to two items that were already in the manual update. This is based on new law and it requires school districts that include any of the grades six through twelve to establish and implement an emergency action plan for responding to a serious or life-threatening sports-related injury sustained while participating in sports and other athletic activities. The next policy, number six, two, four, three, one dot three, heat participation for student athlete safety. And this was included in alert two twenty one. I'm sorry, the related policies were included in alert two twenty one. This was included in Strauss S M A alert two twenty. High school sports mentioned as districts should apply the same items to middle school sports also. It involves the N J S I A's heat participation policy, which requires it to be utilized in conjunction with the preseason heat acclimatization policy as well. The use of a wet globe temperature tool that measures heat stress on humans exposed to high temperatures is noted, as was noted in the Google Doc, that that would be an additional purchase for the school district. The next policy, number seven, is two, six, two, two, student assessment. This is from Strauss S M A alert two twenty. The revision impacts the school district's requirement to administer an elementary school level statewide assessment for science through grade five when previously was only required through grade four. The next policy, number eight, is two, seven, zero, zero, services to non-public school students. The S E A alert date was July two thousand seventeen and it was revised to incorporate revisions in the code regarding services to be provided to non-public school students. These revisions, although they weren't significant, made extensive changes to the language in the policy. It does not require additional responsibilities for a district with a non-public school located in the district. A mandated policy for any school district that has a non-public school located in the school district. However, we don't have that, but it was recommended by Strauss S M A that we include this policy still in our manual just in case this becomes something that does occur, because there have previously been non-public schools in Rockaway Township. Strauss S M A also shared a concern with us regarding, it was a minor language change going from parent to parent guardian when it was in the code. So after the policy and bylaw portion are approved, Strauss S M A will be provided the document and any necessary revisions minor that can tweak that term for us will be done by them. Next policy, number nine, is policy three, two, three, eight, outside activities. This was reviewed for consistency with policy four, two, three, zero. It was added to the manual update, so it wasn't originally included per the policy committee. We noticed editing mistakes in the current policy that was online and it should be revised to align with the policy four, two, three, zero language edits that was already in this manual update. On page two of two of this policy, the policy committee revised to clarify in number four in number five, some expectations and again align with policy four, two, three, zero. I do believe that the R T E A was also going to be giving us some feedback following this up for first read regarding these items. In addition, number seven was also revised to clarify. The tenth policy, policy three, four, two, one dot one, three, is postnatal accommodations. This would be a new policy. It's from Strauss S M A alert two nineteen, which the code, excuse me, statute requires the New Jersey Department of Education to report to the governor and the legislature on the location lactation-related policies that have been implemented at schools. So there is no current federal law or state statute or administrative code requiring this policy, but this is a policy that the committee believed is something that we should be implementing here. And this will allow accommodations for nursing mothers. The next policy is policy four, two, three, zero, outside activities. It aligns with policy three, two, three, zero. The alert date was from two thousand fourteen. Next policy, number thirteen, is policy four, four, two, one dot one, three. This postnatal accommodations also aligned with the prior one and it was from Strauss S M A alert two nineteen. The next policy, five, one, 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 is eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Strauss S M A had revised the existing statute, which now indicates a school district may not condition student enrollment on the fact of the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission does not have the same name or address of the parent on file. So language was updated here to align with that. The guidance regarding admission for students entering the country utilizing H A one visa was also included in this policy. The next policy, five, two, zero, zero, is attendance. It does vary greatly from what is the online version as there were multiple policy alerts that hadn't been applied, so we did include that Google compare version with strike throughs. This addresses the statutory and administrative code requirements of student attendance and these guides have been revised to provide some clarity on an issue that on occasion causes some confusion. Number one, it addresses how student attendance must be recorded in the school register that is used for state and federal reporting purposes. And number two, it permits a local school district to divine unexcused and excused absences for purposes of truancy, student conduct, promotion, and retention. The next policy, five, three, two, zero, is immunization. This is from Strauss S M A alert two twenty. It does have a revised regulation and it was revised to provide additional guidance and to more closely align with the structure of the controlling administrative code. It is highly recommended to provide guidance to school staff members and parents of school-aged children. Next one, we're about halfway there. Policy five, three, three, zero, administration of medication. This comes out of Strauss S M A alert two nineteen. It does have a revised regulation and it requires a board of education to permit self-medication by a student for adrenal insufficiency. The administration of hydrocortisone sodium succinate for adrenal insufficiency and it designates the school nurse and others to administer the medication. The next item that I want to share regarding this is that this policy and any relevant policies and regulations have been shared with and reviewed by the head nurse. So anything that was related to something in her purview, she hasn't reviewed. She's been very helpful. Next, policy five, three, three, zero dot zero, four, administering an opioid antidote. This is from Strauss S M A alert two twenty. It has a revised regulation and it requires schools with grades nine through twelve to obtain an opioid antidote under a standing order. The board extends the provisions to schools with any of the grades five through eight, which a prior board had done here in our school district. The next policy is policy five, six, one, zero, suspension. This is from Strauss S M A alert two twenty, which is more recent alert. The new statute requires the principal to convene a meeting between a student and appropriate school personnel after a student has experienced multiple suspensions or may be subject to a proposed expulsion from public school to identify any of the student's behavior or health difficulties as soon as practical. Next policy is policy five, six, one, five, suspected gang activity. This is from a Strauss S M A alert dated July two thousand fifteen. The statute language added some things like unacceptable conduct, criminal street gang, notifying parents of the victim and the offender, informing law enforcement, and administrators attending gang education seminar program. The next policy, five, six, two, zero, expulsion. Based on the new statute, it requires the principal to convene a meeting between a student and appropriate school personnel after the student has experienced multiple suspensions or may be subject to a proposed expulsion from public school to identify any of the student's behavior or health difficulties as soon as practical. The new statute also allows the principal to hold this meeting if it's the first time a student is suspended. We're getting close in the home stretch. Policy seven, one, zero, zero. This is from Strauss S M A alert dated two thousand seventeen. It has a revised regulation. The policies and regulations were revised to be consistent with the code regarding the long-range facilities in play. The next policy, seven, one, zero, one, is from Strauss S M A alert dated July two thousand seventeen. It does have a revised regulation. And the policy and regulation were revised to align with revisions in code regarding educational facilities. Guidance provided in the reg regarding the process for districts to receive approval, state agency, department names were revised, and additional section for capital projects not subject to educational adequacy review were also added to the regulation, which we will see in the near future. Next, policy seven, one, zero, two. This is also from Strauss S M A alert dated July two thousand seventeen. It has a revised regulation. This was revised to align with code for the approval of the acquisition of lands or approval for acquisitions of existing facilities. Policy seven, one, three, zero, school closing is next. This is from Strauss S M A alert dated July two thousand seventeen. It was updated to provide more detailed information on the insurances a school district must provide to the N J D O E and executive county super to receive approval to close a school. Requirements not in code were removed and others have been expanded. Next, policy seven, two, four, three, supervision of construction. This is from a recent Strauss S M A alert two nineteen. The New Jersey Department of Education published a memorandum titled Contractor Employee's Procedure for Criminal History Record Checks and the memorandum addresses criminal history record checks required for construction contractors' employees serving in a position which involves regular contact with students. So that language was added in here. Strauss S M A felt it was appropriate to revise this guide to incorporate the process outlined in the N J D O E memorandum. The criminal history record check is required by statute. Next, policy seven, three, zero, zero. This is from an alert dated July two thousand seventeen. It does have three revised regs and one that will be abolished. Revised to incorporate minor revisions to administrative code, most importantly, provided clarification of a district procedure to dispose of property. The next policy, eight, two, one, zero, is from Strauss S M A alert two nineteen, which is more recent. The revisions include listing the minimum duration of a school year to be no fewer than a hundred and eighty school days. It cites the statute that requires the one hundred eighty school days to receive state aid, recommending the date of May one to have the school calendar approved by the board and expanding the circumstances or situations in which the school calendar can be altered by the board during the year. Policy eight, two, two, zero, school day. This is from alert two nineteen, which is a more recent alert. It has a revised regulation. The N J D O E published a memorandum titled Delayed Opening and Early Dismissal Policies, Reviewing Requirements Regarding a School Day, A Shortened School Day, and Kindergarten Preschool Class Sizes. The memo indicates the board's policy should detail the starting and ending time that will define the day for each school day in the event of a shortened day. And this guide has a little bit of leverage to it. It should reflect the current practice in the district. Policy eight, three, two, zero. This is from Strauss S M A alert two twenty, which is a more recent alert. This is from Strauss S. Mealer 220, which is a more recent alert, and has a revised regulation. Policy and Regulation Guides 8320 have been revised to provide additional guidance regarding public access to personnel file information. The code requires a board of education to make certain employee records and information available for public access pursuant to the Open Public Records Act. Policy 8462 Reporting Potentially Missing or Abused Children. This is from Alert 219. This new statute requires a board to display specific information in each school building about the Department of Children and Families State Central Registry, a toll-free hotline for reporting child abuse. The new law also requires the information be in a format that is in language that is clear, simple, and understandable, and the information shall be on a poster and displayed at each school in at least one high-traffic, highly and clearly visible public area that is readily accessible to and widely used by students. Policy 8505. This is from Strauss S. Mealer, May 2017. This policy really has a lot of differences to it than what we may currently have going on, so it did take time to really explore the different pieces of this policy. Some of the revisions include adding a school wellness policy coordinator to ensure compliance, adding a district wellness policy coordinator, adding district wellness committee, includes goals that need to be created for school-based activities. It also includes an annual district summary progress report, and then finally, a wellness policy assessment. All right, the next policy, 8630 Bus Driver Aid and Bus Aid Responsibility. This is from Strauss S. Mealer, dated 2017. The policy and regulation guides have been revised to reflect statute. The administration of training programs certification requires the employer to provide training to school bus drivers and aides. We are almost there, everyone. Hopefully, everybody's still awake. The next policy, 9242 Use of Electronic Signatures. This would be a new policy. It's out of Strauss S. Mealer, dated December 2017. This policy guidance regarding the use of electronic forms, filings, and signatures in school district parent communications. This use of electronic forms, filings, and signatures may result in improved efficiency and cost savings over the transfer of paper forms, filing, and signatures back and forth between school and home. And this is also a policy that was highly recommended from our business administrator, Mrs. DeCarlo, who had the pleasure of reviewing all of these policies and all of the regulations, which we greatly appreciate, and providing, you know, any feedback and/or approval. So she also recommends this one. Policy 9400. This is Media Relations. It's from Strauss S. Mealer, dated August 2019, and it provides guidelines governing cooperation between media and the school district. And the policy guide establishes protocols for school district staff members communicating with the media regarding school business. It was revised to clarify that a staff member is not required to receive prior authorization from the superintendent or designated to communicate with the media regarding school business, provided the staff member indicates that they are communicating on their own behalf as a private citizen and not as a representative of the board. And then finally, we have one bylaw. It is Bylaw 0143. This is from Strauss S. Mealer, April 2014. The language was revised to include equal number of votes, decisions made in executive session, and the public decision-making process. From this review and the manual update, there were two policies and one bylaw that were actually removed. Policy 1649 Family First COVID-19 Response Act was already adopted. Policy 5117 Inter-District Public School Choice is something that's at the district's discretion. And Bylaw 0152, the change that was made in the recent alert was not applicable to our school districts. So thank you for allowing for me to share all this info. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. From your report, it's evident that this was quite an undertaking by the policy committee, and it was much appreciated, the work that went into this, to all those involved. With that, may I have a? Is there any other board discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. Regarding 2422, that's the Health and Physical Education. I'm sorry, I don't have the page number. I know we added number 16, Financial Literacy, requires instruction.
Yes.
Which I love. I always tell a story how in fifth grade we learned how to buy cafeteria food with checks and how to balance checkbook and everything. Grade 6 through 8, so is this already in our curriculum for? Or is that something that has to be added?
Mr. Higgins, did you hear that? From my recollection, it is, but let me, I'd like Mr. Higgins to just confirm.
I had a hard time hearing that. Can you repeat?
I was just saying. Item number 16, Financial Literacy, grade 6 through 8. And I was just wondering, does that already exist in our curriculum, or does that have to be written in?
No, it already exists. That Financial Literacy has been a mandate for several years now, and it always exists in several different places within the middle school curriculum, primarily social studies.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just have two other ones I have questions about. And this one might be coming to you, Dennis. For 2700, but we mentioned non-public schools in the district. Would a kindergarten, like at a daycare count as a non-public school? I know you said we don't have any, like.
You don't have a charter school or something of that nature?
No, but like a daycare that offers full-day kindergarten or a kindergarten class with that.
Would that qualify in the policy? Is that the question?
Yes.
In my view, the answer is yes.
Okay. I don't know what I'm going to do with that information.
Yeah, because we have curriculum for kindergarten.
Kindergarten is not mandated in the state of New Jersey.
I know, but we have, we have. I understand, it's not even in the.
I don't know how other people's feelings with 3230 and the subsequent 4230 Outside Activities. I know it mentions campaigning on school grounds during the workday. Do we want to broaden that more just to on-school grounds period? Or I don't know what the committee's thoughts were when looking at that one.
Tanya, I'm sorry, can you just repeat? Because it's regarding number four, it says teaching staff members shall not campaign on school grounds during their workday. So you're asking if you want us to expand?
I, yeah, I guess my concern is what's stopping them from, I don't know, holding rallies at school at 5:00 in the evening or something like that. Because that's outside the school day.
Dennis, maybe you could.
And me, it's not a concern, I don't.
So a school building is what we call a limited public forum, which means that people can gain access to it using your use of facilities, forms, whatever your rules are, but what you do for one, you may have to do for others. With respect to political activities or the First Amendment, free speech, you know, if you're going to allow one entity, what you do for one, you do for all. So if you're going to allow somebody to come in and advocate, you know, a special education advocacy group comes in, and they're going to advocate for changes to legislation, you might find that really great, but there could be other groups that say, oh, hold on a second, I'm not for that. But maybe the union wants to have a rally for whatever their objective is. And then they say, well, you can't say no to us if you said yes to this particular advocacy group that, you know, while they're, you know, they have a different agenda or mission statement, but it's still potentially advocating toward a certain end. Because you're the owners of school buildings, which are limited public forums, you can't deny access, you can't grant access to one and deny it to another.
Okay.
So, you know, that's, you can either deny it for everybody or grant it for everybody.
Okay, so then I'm going to worry during their workday.
Yeah. And that is something you can control during their workday. That's, in my view, that is your time. That's your time with your employees. Outside of the workday, if they follow the use of facilities and they file an application and it gets approved, they can do that just like anybody else can or maybe do under whatever the use of facilities or the policy says. But I think this is more about when you're on our school grounds during our school day, that's board time, that's our time.
Got it. Excellent. Now, thank you, thank you very much, everyone.
And then I just have a follow-up. If there are, does anybody else have questions, suggestions? Do you have any questions?
No.
Following today's meeting, Strauss S. Me will be reviewing the policy and bylaw document for any final language tweaks, which I know I had mentioned previously. And then as far as the update regarding regulations piece, regulations have been reviewed by the administration. Feedback was received from Strauss S. Me. Just, was it today that just got sent through? So that'll get forwarded to the policy committee for review. With that, there may need to be some final revisions, and we anticipate providing the regulations document to the full board by the middle of next week, which will allow for a few weeks for you to review that chunked document. Thank you. Anyone else? If there is no other discussion, and there is no one here from the public, Mrs. DeCarlo, may I please have a roll call on policy?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter-Larue?
Yes.
Mrs. Medrich?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So our last part of the agenda is old and new business. Any board member have any old or new business? Nothing? Okay.
The war is out.
I'm sorry, I know, everybody's done. It was an undertaking. If there's no old or new business, then I will look to just check to make sure there's nobody in the, for, to open to the public. Okay. So do you have to open it?
If you have nobody in public.
Okay, just making sure. Okay. Okay, so on our last piece of this agenda is to adjourn the meeting. So may I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Show of hands, please. Please let it be noted at 8:25 p.m. Good evening, everyone. Have a good night. Be safe.